You'll be surprised when you see him though, but you'll recognize him. He said he would've come tonight, but he's feeling better.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. We have, before we start, let's go ahead with, Pastor, would you pray please?
Yes, absolutely. Would you stand with me and join me in prayer? God, we just thank you for the beautiful weather. God, we thank you for your grace over Harrison. God, we just, we ask that you give us wisdom as we conduct business, represent the citizens of Harrison, God, that you would guide us in everything that we do. Lord, thank you for your grace, and we pray for our country, give our leaders wisdom to guide and protect the people they govern over. God, we pray all of this in your precious name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We've got a few changes tonight. Actually, we're going to do something that we've have never done before. I would like to request two items from the council, and it's up to you all to allow these to be discussed tonight. They're not on the agenda. Number one is, I'd like to give you a report on everything I know about the coronavirus. And number two, Bob would like to make a couple short comments about economic development comments. So if I could have a motion maybe to allow us to...
You're not in session, so...
So...
Is it a general consensus?
Go right ahead. All right, well, I'll go right ahead with the coronavirus. I had been out of town for about 10 days, and when I returned, it was a little different place than when I left. And I think we had a couple of things we wanted to achieve, and this all started yesterday. We got all the department heads together, and first of all, we wanted to make sure that our employees were covered. And what I mean by covered is given the information that we felt that they needed. And so all department heads have drafted, and they have either been sent out or they're in the process of being sent out, information specific to their department. Each department has different requirements, you know, police and fire are going to be different than public, than wage department. So that's going to be taking place over the next couple of days. I think next, I wanted to understand what we had, even though I do not have any jurisdiction as mayor to do with a medical condition. I feel like I have a responsibility to try to keep the community, and especially you folks, informed on what's happening. And to do that, we got to get information from a lot of people. So what I did yesterday, I started by first calling Tammy McCutcheon. She's in the audience tonight, and I'd like her to speak for a minute when I finish. And she gave me a lot of education. And when I started out, I didn't feel very good because I wasn't comfortable that we had a plan. And so she helped that a lot. She even called me after hours, and at 9:00 last night, Vince Lee called. And so the combination of Tammy and Vince, I think gave me a comfort level, that we have a plan. We not only have a plan for prevention, and that's what we're trying to get out, is information for prevention. We also have a plan as if something takes place, if a case comes up, and we believe that it most certainly will. So I felt much better last night, and then today, things even, you know, around the country even went more crazy. So I also called Vince and Dr. Esters. There's about six or seven of us that I've asked if they would meet in the morning. So we're going to meet at 7:30 in the morning, and we're going to try to share information, and that way we're all on the same page, and we all have the information to share, and it'll be the same thing. So tomorrow morning, we'll have a report, and we'll probably almost be meeting daily. Hopefully, over the next few days, this will decrease. Maybe it's kind of peaked right now in height. And the one thing we don't want to do is panic. And I know it's easy to do when you hear all these things. There's a lot of rumors going on right now about Harrison, and there's nothing, to my knowledge, and I think Tammy will also share that, that's going on in Harrison. We've got a, the recent report from the Arkansas State Health Department shows confirmed cases in Arkansas. Does anybody want to guess? Zero.
There was...
We have zero still. It was five minutes ago. We have zero. Now, there are six presumptive, and, and, you know, one of those is still the prime bluff one, and I think people think that's a confirmed one. It's not confirmed yet. They're expected to be confirmed.
Jerry, when you say confirmed, do you just mean CDC confirmed?
CDC.
Okay.
That's exactly...
They just haven't got their test results back, okay?
And it needs to be confirmed by them until it's confirmed. But we have six that are presumed positive, and then we have 20 people that are under investigation. So that's kind of what we're looking at in Arkansas right now. So Tammy, would you mind coming up and saying a few words? She has been so helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight.
And your associate?
Yes, Richard Taffner, Health District Manager for Northwest Region. And I've also invited our County Health Officer, Dr. Kevin Jackson. So any medical, he should be able to answer. Like Mayor Jackson said, right now, it's zero confirmed, six presumed positive, 20 under investigation. There's 135 who they're monitoring with check-ins and guidance by ADH, and then past PUIs, which is persons under investigation, is 24. Of course, this is going to be changing daily, of course. So if you look at it today, it's going to probably be different tomorrow. Does everybody have the website? If you don't, I can give it to you. It's www.healthy arkansas.gov. And you can get the information that I just said, plus everything else that you need to know about the coronavirus, basically, is on there. The 800 number, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, is 501-537-8969. If you need to call after hours or weekends, it's 1-800-554-5738. And just a general number for general questions is 1-800-803-7847. I think you've got that posted on your front door. I've seen this flyer.
Yeah.
I did bring lots of printouts from CDC, and y'all can take one, pass it around, leave them here, leave them in your offices. What you need to know about the coronavirus, signs and symptoms, how the spread, lots of information. All of that can be printed off, or look that again on CDC or thehealthyarkansas.gov. So if you have any questions, maybe one of these, John.
Judge, I'm sorry, Mayor, and City Council.
Thank you, that's a promotion.
I do appreciate you inviting us here today. And those case counts probably will increase over time, and the persons under investigation will increase. What the Health Department will do now is, as each one of those people are identified that are infected, they'll do contact tracing. So they'll see who they had contact with, and have those people had contact with, then triage all those patients to see if they need to be tested. I would want to reinforce, you know, our website has a wealth of information on it for the COVID, and it's got links to CDC. So the CDC website is the best place to get current, updated information, because they've got a team of people working on it round the clock, as do we. What am I missing, Tammy? I, also, you said that, on the planning aspect of it, we've been planning for things for a long time in Arkansas. Post 9/11, we started bioterrorism response planning, which morphed into pandemic influenza planning, which morphed into SARS planning, and MERS planning, and Ebola planning. So, I mean, we've got 20 years of planning that we've done, and exercising, and working through real-world events. So this is kind of what public health does. So, you know, you need to work with your local businesses and government entities to make sure that they're comfortable with what they need to do, and we'll take care of the public health side of it.
Thank you.
Anything you want to add, Bob? As I was saying, I think the most important thing for our community is just not to panic. And you're right, there are rumors running all over the place for all kinds of crazy things. And I guess we've got a shortage of toilet paper now, which I'm not sure what that has to do with coronavirus, or say. But anyway, I think, you know, as a community, we're kind of blessed here, and that we are somewhat isolated from some of the other parts of the state as far as transportation things go. So typically with the flu and things, we want later areas in the state to, you know, to have those outbreaks and things. So we are kind of blessed to be here, but, you know, I think it's inevitable. We're going to see some cases here, and you just have to be ready, and everybody has to be smart, and do the things that we would do to try to prevent flu, and wash our hands, and, you know, if we're sick, you know, stay home. We don't need to go and affect the entire church congregation, or, you know, be out, and do the good things. So we just have to be smart. I mean, we can handle this, we can do this. You know, we got to be real aware and cognizant of our elderly population here in the community, because that's going to be the real susceptible folks here in this area. So, you know, when you look in the country at most of the deaths that have occurred, like Big William and that nursing home situation in Washington. So we have to be smart, and do the things that we would do to protect our families and the community, and we'll get through this.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming. I'll talk to you all tomorrow.
Well, I'm not going to be here tomorrow, and somebody went and let her off.
Okay. Wouldn't like to call her by phone.
Yeah, but here's my card, and I put the phone numbers that she's talking to on the back end.
Okay, great.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. Where is the nearest presumptive case?
You'd be in central Arkansas.
Central Arkansas.
I believe Plaske County, Grant, Slane, Jefferson Counties.
Okay.
If I can do any... Any questions, Council?
I think we've got a lot of information here to read, so it might answer a lot of my questions.
All that information is available on our website.
Okay.
It breaks it down into like educators, like schools like a college, and all the schools have a little piece there that they can click on. It's just for them, healthcare workers, just for them. So it drills down further and further, the more you want it, more specific.
Most important things, wash your hands, don't get more sick, like Doc said. And a real hard thing for some people is don't shake hands.
Don't shake hands.
We go through flu every year, we'll get through this.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, Bob, would you want to share your couple elements before we get to the headline?
I would, and I think it's, it's appropriate we do this this evening. And I'm pleased to report that Countryside Assisted Living will be conducting a groundbreaking within the next two weeks. That's an $8 million-plus facility, 50 new employees opening in early 2021, if things progress. We are, in fact, about five months behind schedule because of some engineering issues with the state of Arkansas, but it's on schedule. If you've driven by the corner, you may have seen some trees coming down, and the house...
The house is down.
It's down today, that's great.
Yes.
The point is, this is tremendous news for this community, a very much needed facility. We're excited to welcome them to the community. Also, today, ADC Manufacturing is adding a new production line to their facility on North Industrial Park Road, 6,300 square feet, and 10 new employees. This should take place about May 1. The equipment is already here. There is a shuffling of production lines and warehouse to accommodate this into the new 6,300 square foot facility. We're excited about that. This has been some months in the planning, and we should have formal announcements on both of these within the next two days. I hope that is received well by the council.
All right. Yes, thank you, Bob. Okay, when we get started, we have one of our department heads that has a real critical game against getting so, if it's okay with you folks, we'd like to let him go through his...
Real critical?
Real critical.
If that bit suspended, it's bananas.
Yeah, no, that's what I was thinking. Luke, you want to go ahead?
I have a real critical.
Real critical. If it wasn't real critical, you'd be last.
You're going first? I am. Yes.
He's going to jump a little bit, but...
I am. Do you have them up on the, I apologize, I didn't know if you put them up on the slides or not, but I'll bring it up here.
Evidently not.
I don't know what you're talking about.
The agenda items, I didn't know if you had them.
Oh, yeah, which ones?
You want the... Just the budget, what about budget first?
You want to go in that order?
Yeah. Okay, perfect. So, actually, we'll start with that then. The franchise fee fund, I did put out some information. It's actually an ordinance to deal with the bond issuance. In central Arkansas, it's actually Bryant's ordinance. It talks about, it's not actually the establishment of the fund, but it's actually the ordinance that they draft whenever they issue bonds for payment. What we're doing for this franchise fee fund, that we would like to establish this, as you all are aware, I believe I mentioned to you in the past, that whenever the public safety taxes were passed, they were not passed that allowed us to borrow money. By establishing this franchise fee fund, we would be moving our current franchise fees from our general fund over into a new fund, and still maintaining that same percentage that the police and fire get all the time. So by doing that, that allows us to use that funds, or those funds, to then pay off bonds. We would like to do this sooner rather than later, and I apologize, I do not have an actual ordinance establishing the fund. I've been in contact with the CFO from Bryant, and we just have not been able to get in touch with each other. We've been back and forth a few times. So as soon as I get that, I will ask that she provide us with their ordinance that actually established it. Theirs was done many, many years ago, to do the exact same thing. They had a sales tax that was not there, that was passed, that did not allow them to borrow money. So they established this franchise fee fund. Rather than reinventing the wheel, we're going to basically borrow with pride. So get that set up. Again, it's not real, real rushed, but I would like to see us put it on the committee meeting next month, and maybe even establish it past the ordinance, I don't know if it's a one-read ordinance or not, in April. So that way, we could, if we needed to, borrow money as soon as possible. And with the low interest rates that are out there currently, it may be more beneficial for us to go ahead and do that sooner rather than later. We can do that, we just have to have those funds spent typically within three years. And again, we're still kind of in the planning stages. We want to make sure it works first before we start borrowing money, but we wanted to have that ability just in case. So if you don't mind, at some point in time in the next month, look that over, that ordinance for the bond issue, but also I will be sending out probably within the next seven days, an actual ordinance establishing a franchise fee fund for you all to look at for next month.
And of course, this ordinance that they wrote has a specific amount.
Sure.
Ours would not be tied to a specific amount.
It is not, no. We do that because the franchise fee fund fluctuates every year. We thought it was going down, and last year, we had more than we've ever had. Now, part of that was energy, and those rates are based off a percentage. So, you know, the more electricity that's being used, the more franchise fees come in. So that goes the same for any gas companies as well. So that will, I just kind of want to mention that, let you all, or remind you all that that's coming, kind of give you a timeline of what we're looking at. Onto the fire pay grid, this is just a quick, a brief little discussion. Mark's going to, I think, hand this out to you. We have been working, and I know you guys had asked us to come to you a lot sooner than what happened last year, to discuss this.
Go ahead and give me one.
This is just a rough draft of what Mark and I have started on in comparison. I did put out last year's fire pay grid out on Google Docs, so that is out there. This is, again, a rough, rough draft, nothing that we are trying to start right immediately, but we want you to be thinking about it.
This is the 2021 proposed, there's going to have to be some adjustment. And the reason for this, as a reminder to committee and council once again, is because of the minimum wage going up, and so we have to make some adjustment in the fire grid. So not that this will be the final version, but it's for you to review.
You have anything you would like to add?
No, unless anybody has any questions early on, but I guess we'll wait here.
And this, again, is a requirement. We're going to have to do something. We don't have any options.
But please, please, please be thinking about it. Look it over, give us, shoot us questions over the next three to four weeks. We'd rather not have questions at the next committee meeting. We'd like to hopefully get this started a little bit sooner than that, so...
It has to be done before budget regardless, right?
It does, but it needs to be done sooner than that. So please, please, please look it over. The mayor and I still haven't had a chance to sit down and discuss it with Mark either, so we will, over the next couple of weeks, and give you all, so hopefully some feedback, and listen to your feedback and update as we go.
Okay, let's move on to the budget amendments, the first one being the two infrastructure bond projects planned.
Okay, I'll kind of let you take that if you want. It's actually wage infrastructure one of these.
Yeah, it's two online projects. The first one being Union Road, Davis Road, Troy Street. And then we've got another project at West Prospect and Olive. Unfortunately, they were simply just left out of the budget this year, so we wanted to go ahead and get them put back in, because we are working on moving towards trying to get those going this year.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for movement to full council?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed the same, we'll move this on to council. That's pretty self-explanatory. The next one is, we'll move back up to the police line item. Luke notified me that we have missed something inadvertently in the budget, and that it is a necessity for the police department, and I'll let you discuss that.
Sure. When we were discussing the first original police budget, we thought, you know, we aren't doing any more servers. We don't need that line item to be in there, because we paid for everything. And looking back at it, there are some annual line items that we pay for out of that, that we need to put back in there. On the budget amendment sheet that was put out there, one of those being RPS, which is vital to their daily operations, basically, and that's about $20,000 to $30,000 of that 50,000. So that, along with annual email maintenance, antivirus maintenance, they bought some wireless routers that were necessary to put in cars. And then there's also another, it's called a cloud analyzer, and I don't know exactly what that is, but it was just a bigger ticket item that was going to come out of that. So it is going from zero to 50. It does take their budget down, as far as their net income, it lowers it by the 50,000. They are still in the black, but we do need to push that on through, unless you all have any other questions.
And we've already spent some of that money so far this year, so...
We have. We've got about $18,000 spoken for to push that. The rest of it's RPS. So that is in there. I don't know that it's been actually a check cut yet, but it would need to pretty quickly.
Okay, we need a motion to move this on to full council.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed the same? Motion carries on to council. The next item is the Crooked Creek Restoration Plan. At council, if you remember, we discussed putting this in this the community service line, but after discussing it with Luke, he thought this might go on more than one year, or be a little bit more extensive, and need more visibility. So what we're asking to do is to create a line item and add this to the 20, the 2020 budget.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion in a second. Any discussion, question?
Is that going to require an amended budget now, since we're creating a new line item?
Well...
All of these are budget amendments that will, we will actually put them in now, and what we do is we take those and we do a monthly budget. So that way, when you look at your financial statements, you're doing an actual comparison of what the month should look like.
So the total impact of all of these is going to be roughly about, what, 260, 270?
Yeah.
Citywide?
Citywide, yes. Whenever you're looking at general fund, it's all split between four different funds, or three different funds, so...
So the total impact of all these budget adjustments, again, you can't get away from it, you're going to have to spend the money, you don't have any option, but yes, it'll be a budget adjustment. So any other discussion?
We need to move that West Prospect and Olive one also, because we did the other one more ago.
I think we did them as, as both of them, did we not?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, we moved them both in. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed the same? Move on to council. That's all from finance.
Okay, thank you. I think before we jump back up to you, Joel, let's get your two out of the way.
Sure.
You can go.
If you, if you'll go down to the lower portion of your budget, one of them is panhandling, and I know you don't want to usually touch this with a 10-foot pole, but Arkansas Municipal League came out with an actual little bulletin about panhandling and safety. I wanted everybody to see it. Really, all this is about. The city of Austin, Texas, actually did an ordinance based off of safety, and they tracked the number of incidents, deaths, and they had all of that information built into their ordinance. So if you all do want to revisit something like this, this information is out there, I believe. Did you have to have that scanned out there?
It's all on the drive.
Perfect. So, again, not saying you have to, just wanted you all to make, everybody to be aware, when Chris and I talked about it down at the conference, no, again, nobody was really discussing it, so this is just more information if you do. That's all I have for that part of it. And then next is business license. Again, we wanted you all to look at it. This isn't something that's going to take effect anytime soon, but the 501(c)(3), I put out all this information that talks about the exempt organization types, if we wanted to define that, if we, if you all wanted to go ahead and just say, look, 501(c)(3) would pay the same business license as everybody, or if you want to say that different locations of 501(c)(3)'s need to have a part of this. This was just a way, because we had not defined the 501(c)(3), who would be affected, and see what you're all's, what you all wanted to do as part of that adjustment to that ordinance, if you did want to do an adjustment to that ordinance.
Yeah, we've got all year to take care of that, but probably the sooner the better.
Yeah, again, we, we're trying not, we're trying to be proactive on this and not wait till the last minute. I know that you all are trying to do that as well, so. If anybody has any questions on this, again, I just pulled it directly from the IRS website. I believe there are actually 21 different types of nonprofit organizations, or 501(c) organizations. They're all in there, but not that most of them matter. It's typically just the 501(c)(3) that's traditionally...
And discussing this too, the primary issue is from, it's not a 501(c) that doesn't have a structure in town, or, you know, a building that they work out of. We're mainly talking about those 501(c)s, like Sharon Care and others, that have a structure that will have inspections.
And Mark can maybe speak a little bit to what he's run into, as far as what the questions have been regarding this, because I know those have probably been most of his questions on the business license, and whether or not they owe or not.
Mark, what does our business license say in regards to 501(c)(3) exempt status?
It's silent on the 501(c)(3). It just says nonprofit. It doesn't say anything about tax status. It just says nonprofits are exempt from the fee, not the inspection.
Correct.
And so we're running into several facilities that we're still going to put the man-hours into, more specifically, the hospital is one of the main ones, and all their facilities they own, that we're running into a lot of man-hours, a lot of time, just on those facilities alone.
They are a 501(c)(3) organization, and that extends to each of the structures.
Okay, and I guess I need to wrap my...
Okay, and I guess I need to wrap my head around this fact is, and I've thought about this ad nauseam, it makes me sick, because when we're talking 501(c)(3), we're talking about nonprofit organizations, and that's in regards to tax dollars, correct?
Yes, as defined.
Not licensing fees.
Right.
We're talking tax.
We're talking business license.
Again, my point is.
It's not a tax.
They're exempt in regards to tax dollars, not license fees. My point is, is we're not talking about dealing and messing with their tax situation. We're talking about dealing with a license fee that applies to everybody in the city of Harrison. It doesn't make any difference whether you're 501(c)(3) or you're profitable.
Currently, it does, but.
Well, again, because that's what's in there. But my thinking is, is, and I need to read this study of, and I'm sure I'm going to catch some flack for this, but my thinking is, is it's apples and oranges. We're not talking about a tax exempt situation. We're talking about a licensing situation for safety in the city of Harrison. And they all, I mean, you know, my opinion is, is they all need to do it, and we need to take that exemption off the ordinance. What do you think, Wayne? That's my.
I've been told with the reason with.
Is just take it off the ordinance. We don't deal with 501(c)(3)'s. This is a business license. If you're going to operate a business inside the city of Harrison, no matter what kind of business you have, you're going to pay a license fee.
You want to go ahead and address part of that?
Well, just, it's not.
Sure.
It's got to be an actual structure. They've got to have.
And I'm good, I understand that part, but again, we're back to this piece of, and we use the hospital as an example. They're a nonprofit organization, they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. However, what keeps them from having a business license? Is that my question?
But also, we have the issue with the hospital that it's just not one structure. It's multiple structures.
And that.
And does that business license apply to each of those structures separately? In the discussion with Luke was, do you say, okay, if it's a different address, now you have a business license for each address?
And that, you think so?
Yes.
And that's what we've handled. The reason being, and correct me if I'm wrong, I have to still go to that address and do that, whether I do an inspection.
Since they own all the medical clinics in town now.
But if you specifically state that if you have the 501(c), does that cover all of those facilities? Well, it.
Again, the 501(c)(3) does not need to be in the ordinance.
Right.
That would eliminate some of this.
Separate address, separate license.
There you go. But that also needs to be addressed per the ordinance. If we clean it up, it says separate address.
Separate license.
Separate license.
Bill, you have somebody behind you that's been wanting to speed.
I would, I would just ask that you be very careful with the terminology. Mitch, Mitch is using the correct terminology, 501(c). Do not put a number with it because they're on 501(c) twos, sixes in this city. So that's all, maybe it would just be.
But again, my point is, Bob, and I appreciate that, is do away with the 501 of the ordinance, period. Why do we have?
Agreed.
That's, that's my, that's my point. That's what I think.
So what's the point I'm hearing is just take the word nonprofit out of.
There you go. We're not talking, we don't care whether profit or nonprofit or profit.
You're in business.
You're in business, you need a.
They are receiving a service.
By address.
So no multi-building discount.
Well worded.
Lack of a term, that's it. I guess my question would be is, unless, and let's use, and I'm not, I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just thinking out loud here, let's use Ramsey Motor Company. They have a south lot, they have a north lot. Do they pay two license fees?
Yeah.
Case closed. So we need.
Clearance.
Yeah, another clerk should be another.
Correct.
The banks. How many banks is that?
Three.
So I think, would that be correct, Bob? Would you feel comfortable with that? And I understand.
I don't have any objection to what that is. I would just want to be very careful with anyone using the terminology with a number of, every church is affected now, too.
Yeah, and again, I go back to, they've got to do the inspection. That's the reason we do the license. They still have, they still have facets back for their name for services.
Schools, the college.
Again.
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 Call me out.
And so, and that, that's my, that's my out-loud thinking.
We just need clarity and clarification, so.
So you ordinance writers, get your brains together and let's see what we can. I mean, that's what I look at. I think you made it pretty clear then.
Yeah, I think based on that, I kind of have a direction.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's, in our discussions, yeah.
Chris, like the same way, I just, and I kept looking at it, and I go, we're not talking about tax money. That's the reason you have 501(c) fees. That's the reason.
Well, and there's a difference between a 501(c) and nonprofits.
But again, we're not, that's not what we're.
I understand.
We're talking about structures inside the city of Harrison.
Right, but the ordinance is specific in says nonprofits.
And the ordinance be fixed.
And they're receiving a service along with the license.
Yeah. And I'm sure we're going to hear about it. There's no doubt in my mind.
Okay. Luke?
Can I interject a little bit of history? Is the, the one thing that you did hear about before, and this started in the very beginning, was the churches. So that would be one thing that you'd need to decide, is that going to be an exempt entity or not?
Do they pay now?
No. Bill, another thing you have to decide, do you consider.
Nobody's down.
Do you consider.
Nobody.
None of the nonprofits.
That's one.
Schools, churches.
That's where that all started.
And again, do they inspect the churches?
They do.
Case closed.
Well, Chris now.
I'm not, and I'm not being hard about this, I understand, but here's the flip side. If they need a service that's provided by the Harrison Fire Department, be done by having inspections done at their facility, hard, God help me for saying this, I don't care what the name is above your door, whether it's Assembly, Baptist, or First National Bank, or Green Forest, you've got to have a license.
Amen.
Is that, is that simple enough?
I agree.
I'll get that directed and have it put in the next committee.
Luke, I think that covered you.
It does.
My brief will be the same.
Or does that, does that need to be a rewrite? Wait, I guess we're going to cover all three of the things we've been addressing in one, one go around.
He's going to want to know.
This is, we're not planning on dropping this into place until 2020, 2021.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Luke, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
If we could go back up to the top now and start in order, goes back, we'll get you again, Bill.
Oh, darn.
But if we'll hand it off to Joel, and you've got Matt Russell in the audience.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for sparing a few moments for us. First of all, as the commander of the 501(c)(3), you know, we don't have a building, and every dollar that comes out of our pocket, and this is a disabled American veterans, you know, is $1 that we can't help veterans with. So I would appreciate if you keep that in mind as you do your deliberations. I'm here today to talk to you about the Patriot March. I have some really good news and some really bad news. The good news is that a few weeks ago, this idea started where the National Guard was so overwhelmed by the warm reception by this community that they wanted to give something back. So they thought, how about a march through the streets of Harrison? That would be pretty cool. And so we agreed, and the Army Reserve Unit here thought that was a great idea, too, and so did everybody else, and this thing has just snowballed. And Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4H, FFA, schools, our law enforcement, the Fire Department, everybody's just gotten back of this and really wants to participate in. Presently, I have over 200 marchers signed up. How many people, and part of this thing is after the march, which would start at the Armory up by the airport, come down back roads to its main street, then at Hudson's, all these other groups would join in. And then it would end downtown at the square. There would be a ceremony. The mayor and judge were invited to speak, which we both accepted. There would be, we are about this close, I think, to getting Senator Bozeman to attend. He's really trying to, and he's trying to work out his schedule. But it is a, we've also got the schools involved from an, from a essay in art contest among the schools with a Patriot theme, and the winners would be cash prizes provided by the DAV, and then the grand prize winner would read their essay at the ceremony. And also, the grand prize winner of the art contest would use that for the logo for next year's march. This is a wonderful celebration of community. You guys have such a special community here that I'm new to, and the more I get into it, the more of the community and the military and the veterans and law enforcement and Fire Department and other first responders, the relationship is just phenomenal. Everybody has each other's back here. So we thought this would be a great way to celebrate that. So we've been going full speed ahead up till about two days ago, and in this weekend's paper, there's going to be a big announcement about the Patriot March, and we've noticed there's flyers up in about every store in town, and we've been really hard at work. Then comes along this coronavirus, and we are debating right now of postponing the event. We have VFW, American Legion, and Disabled American Veteran units coming from all over the state of Arkansas, Southern Missouri and other states. Schoolchildren will be involved. I just heard that the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts have decided to cancel all engagements till at least the end of April. And the last thing we want to do is bring people into here that are infected. I think also we want to, you know, safety first. So we're about to make a final decision, but before we make one, I would like to hear anyone on the council's opinion on that matter.
What was the chat?
April 4th, about three weeks.
What are the chances of a fall march? You know, the summer's pretty hot, so I mean.
We could do fall, that's fine, too.
I agree with, we just don't know enough.
Yeah.
To know about the coronavirus.
It's going to take a few months for this virus thing to calm down. You know, another problem is, we had a big food drive as part of all this, too, food for veterans. Walmart stores are empty of toilet paper, which is one of the biggest things you want to get for veterans, you know, in their care package. So, you know, the, none of it would be as successful as if this coronavirus didn't exist. So anybody's got any thoughts?
Matt, as a DAV, I think we need to probably look at seriously moving it in the future someday.
Okay, that's, that's our thinking, too, and I just wanted to verify that. So the chances are, we'll announce it this weekend, the big spread in the paper that's already in print, and then come early next week, we'll announce that we're postponing it. So that's sort of the way it sums it out. So thank you for your time. Are there any questions at all?
No, a quick statement. You mentioned the 501(c)(3). Again, having those buildings, you're not going to incur any kind of a business license, so.
So if there's no building, then there would be no license. Okay, good. Well, that's good enough.
Thought, Matt, just a thought, a lot of the country celebrates Patriots' Day on September 11th.
Yes, sir.
911. That's on a Friday.
That may work well a lot of times.
I just throw it out there.
No, that's a great idea. A lot depends on when the National Guard has drill weekend, and we have to sort of work around their schedule. So, but I think when we do have it, it's going to be a very great event for this community, and I think the young people especially will get to hear a lot about patriotism, what it means, and this community is one of the most patriotic communities. By the way, just so you know what this is all about, the Guard and the Reserve, it's their idea, they were going to wear packs with 22 pounds in each one, representing the 22 veterans that take their own lives every day. And then we're also going to take the names off of our war memorials and put them on the back of their packs while we march to honor those. So this is a really good thing, and someday, we're going to have a fun time with it.
We are.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
I think you, Mr. Marine, and you, Mr. Army, and me, we'd make the rest of council marching.
Absolutely.
We need, we may need to put them on a flatbed truck.
Hey, hey, hey.
I don't know about pratt.
A dump truck.
We can do it.
Nah.
Okay. Joel, I think Wade's got the rest, the next two.
Okay, first one's pretty simple. It's just a reminder that we do have a public hearing for the abandonment, abandonment of alley rideaway, actually just over here, adjacent to the old First Federal Drive-Thru Bank. Second item is an alley rideaway dedication, which is actually tied to the same thing. The reason we're abandoning the rideaway is because the alley was actually built not in the right place, the way the city was originally platted, so we're going to abandon what we don't need, and they are dedicating what we do need. And I just simply need a council approval to accept that rideaway.
Make a motion, we move it to full council?
Second.
Okay. Full council. You have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we do need to hold it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Well, it was quick. That's it. We're down to Chris Ed.
I think Wade had a presentation about the take-home vehicle policy.
Yeah, we, we sent out the latest draft of the policy to allow take-home vehicles for designated employees within Public Works. It's very similar to what you received last month. I did add a few other things in there, including addressing the use of medical marijuana while operating a city vehicle, the transportation of firearms, and I hate saying it, but just in case we ever have one in town parking in front of a sexually oriented, orientated business. Make sure that, we clarified, those are no-nos.
In town or in somewhere else?
Pretty much in general, yeah. Obviously, unless they're parking, fixing a leak out front or something, shouldn't be parked there. Same as what is already included, liquor stores, bars, things of that nature. Those are just to mainly protect, or to, to respect public perception of how we use our vehicles. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you've had a chance to review the policy. It's, it's pretty straightforward. A lot of it, a lot of it is based off of the same policy that the police department uses.
How do your people feel about it?
I guess, you know, grateful that it's being considered. It was, it was something that was done in the past that had been, to a degree, taken away. So they've been quite responsive to it. My supervisors are like me, though. We want to make sure that we've got proper rules in place and that it's, it's not abused.
And one of those take-home vehicles, if you have a child in that vehicle, and that vehicle's involved in an accident, is the insurance going to be responsible for that child's, we'll say the child was injured?
Yes, our policy will cover any passengers, regardless of whether they are city employees or not.
Okay. And there's no time limit on that?
No, I talked to TASH about it, and of course, they went through the same, same thing with, in dealing with the police department's policy on how they handle take-home vehicles.
I just wanted to be sure.
It was, that was one of our concerns, and we wanted to make sure that. Because it does allow an employee to drop their child off at school on the way into work, and we wanted to make sure that child was protected if there was ever.
And to clarify, just so that everybody understands this, there is no additional charge for that. I mean, it's already baked into the policy, so it doesn't matter. So if I get in the vehicle with a city employee and they have an accident, I'd be covered.
You need to charge.
Yes, and I think you, I read this, you've got the virus, by the way.
That's not how it is, Heath.
But I have presented to council because it is something that I do want to get formal approval from council so that I can...
So are we looking to take this to full council?
Yes, sir.
So we're looking for a motion to take this to full council. And I do believe that...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is drug disposal presentation by Mr. Larry Kennemore.
Yes, and I'll just do a quick introduction. Mr. Kennemore is with STAT Medicament Disposal Corp. They've developed a, I guess, a patented system for safely disposing of prescription drugs that neutralizes the drugs as soon as they are placed into these containers. Mr. Kennemore, if you'd like to come up and...
I want to thank Mr. Largent and Mayor Jackson and Wade for getting me here today. I have a sample of what's in the bottle, and my wife's going to give the bottle for all of you to take home with you. It holds about 50, 60 pills, and you'll be able to see how it operates. But I have a sample of what's in that bottle that we could put one of my old VA medications in so you can see how fast it does it.
It's kind of like Shark Tank here.
Kind of like Shark Tank. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I know.
Yeah, we're the only award-winning safe drug disposal program in the United States. This is me. I'm a retired paramedic, City San Diego Fire Department. It began back in 1975 when Narcan first came out. All of you know that Narcan is a great product. I came potted in the days when it was Mother May I, and that means you had to call, get a doctor or a nurse's permission to give it. And now everybody's carrying it around in their pocket and giving it away. So I'm also on all these groups, National Association of Drug Abortion Investigators, National Stewardship Action Council, Sierra Club, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Arkansas Environmental Education Association. We didn't win once, but we won twice. We won the 2017 Sam's Club Small Business Championship, beat out 13,000 other companies across the United States. And we also won the 2017 Small Business Administration's Core Outstanding Green Business of the Year Award, and that's where we got our award in Washington, DC. And Senator Bozeman was there with us. Governor Hutchinson supports this program. He loves his bottle. He loves the way that it works. He loves what it's going to do for the environment and what it'll do for the opioid crisis. We have massive support across the United States from the Rotary. Rotary has taken on the opioid crisis, and they are certainly supporting the program. I'm a member of the Rotary Action Group for Addiction Prevention. They've taken on this for two reasons. One is what it does for your drinking water, which I'm going to explain to you in just a couple minutes, and what it does for the opioid crisis. So we won for two reasons. Number one, it helps solve the opioid crisis, and it protects your drinking water from what you're going to find out soon in your drinking water tonight. For examples, we took from here previously, there's about a minimum of 22, I believe. You do have a drug take-back here. Police Department has a drug take-back box. Here's the problem with the drug take-back program and how I came up with the idea for my product. And that is that, as you can see, as the amount of drugs that's collected over all these years have gone up, you also see the drug deaths have gone up. So actually, it has had no effect on the amount of drug deaths. And all these surveys from John Hopkins and the American Journal of Drug Abuse show that only a miniscule amount of drugs that are in your community are collected on your take-back day. So the reason why people don't use it from these, research was done, number one, it's not convenient, having to wait for a drug take-back day, which is twice a year, having to drive to a drop-off location. And 73% of the people said they didn't like going to the police department to drop off their old medications. So what about those elderly or disabled? Don't drive. What do they do with theirs? We all know what they're doing. They're flushing them down the toilet, the sink, or throwing them in the trash, and you're drinking them every day. Your police officers have to empty this drug take-back box, store it, ship it when they're collected for drug, and ship them for destruction. And what is the cost for the city? I don't know. You might want to look into that. Here's another problem with the drug take-back program. This came out of an actual drug take-back box. 60 to 70% of the weight reported is actual bottles, packages, wrappers, and not drugs. So if they told you they collected 100 pounds, they probably only collected 30 pounds. Support Boone County Substance Abuse Coalition President Reverend Carl Palmer, he's had a presentation. Quandis Club, Lions Club, Rotary Club, supporters. Your Chamber of Bob Largent has had a presentation. Your Boone County Coroner Aaron Gunning has also had a presentation. In fact, there is still an opioid crisis. 60 to 70% of the people that started, started with pills. And as you can see, these arrests that were taking place in Boone County, there was opioid pills involved in those arrests. These are the two award-winning programs. The bottle that you have in front of you and the kiosk, which I brought over here, the bottle holds about 60 pills or liquids. It comes in an envelope. I'll pass this around. There's a bottle inside. And also inside is a postage-paid return envelope. As soon as the bottle is filled up, you put it in the postage-paid return envelope, and you mail it back to us. And a new one will be sent out. If you'll notice on the side of your bottle, there's a barcode. That barcode relates to an address or a location where it was mailed to. So when we get it back, we scan it in, we know the actual location that it came from, and we send out another one. So it safely neutralizes all these in the bottle or in the kiosk, and this program is free. I'm not here asking for any taxpayer dollars. We are fully funded, and you're going to find out why. This program will cost the city $0. The contents have been tested. This was done by the National Institute of Drug Abuse. You can see how fast it neutralizes those 25 or 26 different medications that they put in there finally. It neutralizes them pretty fast. So they're irretrievable. How I came up with the idea was real simple. When I was a paramedic, we used to give activated charcoal to kids that took something they shouldn't have took. Well, besides making you throw up, it did something else that I didn't realize until I started researching. That is, it absorbs all the chemicals that are around it, and you can never get it out. Once something has been absorbed by activated charcoal, you can't wash it out, you can't burn it out. It's there forever. So the reason we won, it helps solve the opioid crisis in your city, and it's fully funded by the Pharmaceutical Industry Association of America. Told you, Jeff. The only problem we ever have in making presentations anywhere is the sound, always. That's Claudia, by the way. She's from Fayetteville, Arkansas. You saw that bag of pharmaceuticals she had. Her husband had just passed away, and she had all those pharmaceuticals. She was getting ready to flush them down the toilet because she didn't know what to do with them. Let me move along to the next one. I can't get it to move. There we go. Okay. So the other reason that we won is we test the drinking water for pharmaceuticals. We test the drinking water for the actual pharmaceuticals, not what happens to the pharmaceuticals in your body when you get rid of them into the water and sewer system. We test for the actual pharmaceuticals. And we tested here in Harrison, Arkansas. It'll change. There we go. Did we miss one? Can we just go back one? No? Guess not. We're not there yet. Okay. So your city does not test for pharmaceuticals in your drinking water. They're not required to by any government agency from the EPA on down. Anybody know why? There's no known process to remove them once they're in your drinking water, except for distillation, which is cost prohibitive for any city to do for your drinking water. That's why they're known as forever chemicals. Once they're there, they're there forever. And here's the test of your drinking water. These are the actual pharmaceuticals that were in your drinking water. As you can see, there's ibuprofen, sex hormones, blood pressure medications. You're drinking this every day in your drinking water. And again, as I said, there's no known process to remove them except for distillation. See if we can get this one to play. This is from the EPA itself.
Based on the Toxic Substances Control Act, since 1976, EPA has issued regulations to control only five existing chemicals determined to present an unreasonable risk. That is five out of almost 80,000 existing chemicals. If EPA has adequate data and wants to protect the public against known risks, the law creates obstacles to quick and effective action. The 2005 study found 287 different chemicals in the cord blood of 10 newborn babies. Our kids are getting steady infusions of industrial chemicals before we even give them solid food.
And the government protecting their water supply, and that's often not the case. One big concern might be fetuses that, in effect, are living in water. So if that fetus gets exposed to a chemical, it's constantly drinking its amniotic fluid.
There we go. See if we can start that one there.
Pharmaceuticals in our drinking water here, they include ibuprofen, caffeine, monosyn, and about three or four others. In Philadelphia, they had 56 pharmaceuticals or byproducts. They range everything from epilepsy medication to mental health medicines to pharmaceuticals that really run the gamut. Here's the bottom line from the Associated Press on the study they did. It was, as you mentioned, a five-month investigation involving the AP investigative team. 50 major cities in 15 states were looked at, and drugs were found in the water of 24 major cities. We're talking 41 million Americans here who drink that water. So what's in the water? Everything from acetaminophen and ibuprofen to mood stabilizers, antibiotics, angina, heart, as well as cholesterol drugs, and even sex hormones. The trouble here, Mike, is that the federal government does not test specifically for pharmaceuticals in the water. In fact, there is no way to scrub water that is in a treatment plant for pharmaceuticals.
So kiosks. No other program offers these kiosks that we have can do what that kiosk does, and is fully funded with no taxpayer dollars. So what will the kiosk do for your city? Increase drug removal from the environment, increase participation by your citizens. If we mail one of these to every home in your city, it's going to protect your drinking water, it's going to help with the opioid crisis, and provide for your healthcare facilities, which I'm going to get to in a minute, which you have in front of you, with a cost-free disposal, and allow those healthcare facilities to comply with new EPA regulations that just took effect. And by the way, I'll add something to this for you people that are on the vaping issue. In those new EPA regulations, they declared that nicotine is an acute hazardous waste, and they are also under these new regulations. Two reasons we won: the bottle and the kiosk, and using no taxpayer dollars. So how's it paid for? Real simple. It's a product stewardship program. That is, the manufacturers were taken to the U.S. Supreme Court in 2015, all the pharmaceutical industry, and they lost a case there. The Supreme Court said they are responsible for the end of life of all their pharmaceuticals, and they're required to pay any municipality to take care of those pharmaceuticals. Whatever the city decides to do, Pharma's got to pay for it. Product stewardship is real simple at a minimum. The requirement that manufacturers' responsibility for a product extends to post-consumer management of that product and its packaging, shifting the financial burden away from you, the city, and away from the government to the manufacturers. How it works, real simple. There's a product stewardship program, which we have, and by the way, our product stewardship program is a 501(c)(4). It's called MAD, M-A-D-D, okay? Which stands for Medicine and Drug Disposal. And all it takes is for the city to pass a simple ordinance. It's not difficult. When you do that, we take care of everything else. We will provide as many of these that you need in your city, and we will mail one of these bottles to every listed mailing address in your city, and Pharma will pay for it. So there was two ways it was done before. There was government-funded programs, and that is that your police department has that drug take-back box. That's being paid for by your taxpayer dollars. Or the local legislation, which your city can do by passing a simple ordinance. It's called the Extended Producer Responsibility Act. And I gave Wade, and I gave the mayor, I gave everybody copies of it so you can see what that ordinance looked like. It's pretty simple. There's nothing difficult to it. Anyway, Pharma lost that lawsuit. Since they've lost that lawsuit, they've been on a extreme, I don't know how to put these words, but they've been trying to do everything to stop all these cities from passing these ordinances because they have to pay for it. So they lost in the Supreme Court, and then they started telling everybody they're going to have to raise the amount of your prescription if we do these programs all over the United States. Well, it just so happens, in the transcript of the Supreme Court case, they stipulated to the Supreme Court that every city of the United States did this program, it would only raise a prescription by a penny, one cent. So how's it work? You pass a simple responsibility ordinance, Pharma pays for the product stewardship program for your city. We bill and collect from Pharma. We provide you the bottles and the kiosk, and they're very easy to use. So just to let you know what's next, real simple, I don't know if anybody hears from Pharma, but they follow us all across the United States everywhere I go, and they wind up, I can tell you that they donate to a lot of people, and as you can see here, they donate 369 of the 435 members of Congress. And so they have an open door to them, and so every time something like our program comes up, you understand what they do, is they try to shoot it down. One of the first things they did was, they tried to say our product was unsafe. I gave all of you a copy of the material safety data sheet from the U.S. government that shows there is no harm in here at all. There's only one active ingredient in this product, and that's the activated charcoal. Everything else that's in there is a common, everyday, household product that you probably use. So that's the next thing that usually takes place. Pharma's going to come along and probably contact you, or if they've already contacted you, I have no idea. So help us help you address the opioid crisis, remove pharmaceuticals and medications from your drinking water, and provide your healthcare facilities with a cost-free answer to these new regulations. And you have a copy of these new regulations. We gave them to everybody. You can read them over. It shows you what hospitals, pharmacists, doctors' offices, chiropractors, they even expanded what a healthcare facility is. And in your city here, I went over this with Mr. Largent, there is about 150 healthcare facilities here on these six pages. This is a list of all of them that we got from the EPA that are going to have to comply with these new regulations. And you can help them at no cost. So just a couple cute little cartoons for you. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
So where all would these kiosks go?
We would contact first all your healthcare facilities. I can tell you, pastor in Wilson County, Tennessee, every church has one in their lobby. Wilson County, Tennessee, has a terrible opioid crisis. The pastor, one pastor came up to me crying about 78 people in his congregation is lost to the opioid crisis.
The participation rate?
We're putting these right in the lobby so that when people come in, there it is. Get rid of your old drugs.
So this increases the participation rate?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah. You realize people are going to have this instant, you do recycling here, right? How long can it take for people to really get into recycling? Same as the program.
We're working on it.
They have these bottles, and pretty soon, they get on track, and they start filling them up and send them in. But we have a schools training program that we do, and there's no cost to the city. We go into all the schools, we send the stuff home with the kids, and you know why. It's the kids that are going to go home and tell the parents, this is what it is, this is what it does, this is how it works, and why you need to do it.
So you mentioned that this would, I think you said, kind of take the place of the drug take-back day?
Well, no, you can still do the drug take-back day.
Okay. Does the police department have any comment about any of that?
When he first came to town, I believe, we met the mayor's office.
Yes, we did.
And we highly support it because we're going to do the drug take-back regardless. So if we have these in the pharmacies or even in the churches, as you said, it's more medication that's going where it needs to go, and not in the street. And it's costing us absolutely nothing, so we have no problem.
So the police department's on board?
Yes, we have no problem with that, so I guess.
What do, I mean, what's our investment in this from a council standpoint?
An ordinance. An ordinance.
Have you read the ordinance?
Barry, can you explain some of the documentation necessary?
Sure. Okay. Number one, you're going to have to pass the ordinance, and I gave Wade and the mayor the ordinance, and let me explain to you, it has to be exactly that way, because some municipalities have tried to change the wording, and guess what Pharma said? They pointed back to the Supreme Court and said, this is the ordinance that we lost on. If it's not this ordinance, we're not paying for it. So it has to be that ordinance. And it's real simple. It just says that you want to hold the producers responsible for their pharmaceuticals in the city, and that you're going to institute some sort of a program. You can institute any kind of a program. We're just coming to you with the program that we have.
So the action we're looking for tonight is to pass it to full council for an ordinance?
I think tonight was more informational. We did not distribute the ordinance yet. We wanted you to have time to... We did not distribute the ordinance yet, we wanted you to have time to hear the presentation, review the material, and this is something that we can bring back next month to the committee with an actual ordinance.
Here's a copy of the contract that we give you. This tells you step-by-step everything that we, our 501(c)(4) is going to do once you pass the ordinance. And it shows you that there's no cost to you, and in fact, as Wade knows, the Supreme Court, when they passed this case, put in quotes the word "all" and made it in capital letters, that Pharma is responsible for all costs. So obviously, somebody here in the city is going to want to oversee this program, and I gave Wade the rate sheet that Pharma is paying by hour right now, and how many hours most of the municipalities are billing, that we're billing Pharma for them for. And so, somebody in the city wants to oversee it because you want to give a report to Pharma and say, "You pay these dollars, this is what we did, this is how many drugs we took back." And actual drugs, not just papers, wrappers, bottles, can give the actual drugs itself. So I'll give this to you, Wade.
How many cities are using this service you're calling up?
Not here at all, in Arkansas.
Yeah, I understand not any in Arkansas, just in general.
Two. Now, we just got started, so...
How long have you been promoting this?
Okay, we've been promoting it about fourteen, about fourteen months. The biggest problem is right here, and that is, I'm just going to lay it out to you right up front. That is, the biggest problem is the city council, because we have discovered that after I leave, I don't know who knows somebody from Pharma, or who's involved with Pharma. They usually wind up getting involved, I'm going to give you a real good example. City of Chicago passed the ordinance. How it... They put in the ordinance that they would not have Pharma pay for it for five years. So, the city wastewater people are spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of their budget to do this program, because they passed the ordinance and said, "Pharma's not going to pay for five years." Now, where did that come from? So we've been up against them everywhere we go. Like I said, the biggest one that they came out with about six months ago was how harmful was the stuff in the bottle? Because you open it, and you smell it, you're going to smell the smell of vinegar. And that, everybody thinks, "Oh, wow, that's terrible stuff." It's just vinegar, is all it is. It's one of the products that are in there. It's a patented trade secret.
I don't see the dark side of it. I mean, it sounds like a win-win, really. I mean, we've been battling drugs in our community for a while.
Yeah, we've been battling them, they show up everywhere we go.
And now we've got, you know, like you said, our drinking water.
Yes. The issue is not just the opioid crisis, your drinking water. That came from your actual drinking water that you're drinking every day, and you heard the EPA, they don't regulate it, and Wade will tell you, they don't test for pharmaceuticals.
Just for a point of clarification, if we're worried about our drinking water, we need to get that to Washington County, because that's where our water comes from.
Yep.
We'll be protecting the people who get water downstream.
Yeah.
Exactly, it starts somewhere.
Well, it's like the city council member told me a couple months ago, it's like trying to take down an elephant, one mosquito at a time.
Barry, would you send me contact info from your two control files?
Sure. Any other questions? If not, I look forward to working with your city. By the way, you wind up being the first one in the city. The president of the National Stewardship Action Council will come here, newspaper, radio, TV, and say, "This is what the city in Arkansas is doing." There's only forty-three municipalities in the United States doing it right now. Only forty-three, and I just told you all why. It's a battle. Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business, we've got Orion here to present a commercial waste disposal program.
Good evening, thank you for letting us address you. My name's Kevin Gardner with Orion Waste Solutions. We're kind of responding to a complaint that came to our office, and this is kind of where this was driven by. As you know, we take lint debris at our drop-off facility, and we've had several residents come by with a bag or two, and they had to wait long periods of time for commercial businesses to unload their lawn trailers and everything else. So, as we started looking at this, and kind of just trying to figure out what the exact problem was, is that we found that eighty to ninety percent of the customers that are coming into the drop-off center are commercial businesses, commercial-generated businesses, charging customers for clearing debris, and then taking it there and disposing of it for free. Then they turn around and go over and get the free mulch, which is not a problem. But what's creating the problem is, it's now creating a wait time for those few residents bringing that small amount of waste, lint waste, to dispose of it. As you know, it's kind of tied in there in the configuration, and we have to try to set it so that everybody can drop it off instead of having to lift it up over their heads. So it's kind of created a little bit of a safety issue as well, and we're just trying to address that situation. In our conversations, we spoke to Wade and Mayor Jackson, and kind of looked at the situation. To give an example of the amount of waste we're talking about, he's taking in between ninety and a hundred and ten yards of yard debris every day. That almost fills this room. And eighty to ninety percent of that is coming from commercial businesses, and not the residents. So again, is, if you go back, so we started looking into the situation, trying to figure out, how do we do this, what do we need to address, how do we... Physically in plan, one of the things we noticed is in the contract, the residential contract, it basically states, "Excludes debris resulting from services of a commercial services provider, and/or debris collected by a commercial service provider." So, if you skip down to the recycling drop-off center, the following services to city and Boone County residents. So what we're asking for, and to help curb this situation, and also eliminate residents trying to get in, and this is what it's actually designed for, is resident drop-off, is to impose a fee of ten dollars per loose yard to those commercial customers dropping off materials. That would just barely cover the cost of our Bobcat operations, the extra labor involved, the extra hauling fees that we had associated, to haul this out to the city yard for further grinding and processing. What we were requesting is that we be able to start this fee somewhere around April fifteenth. In your, and I don't know if it's loaded in here. I don't think, the presentation's not... You might want to hand that out. Would you like some presentations for you to see? I'm sorry, I thought it was loaded in.
I'm sorry.
It is on the Google Drive with the...
So basically, what we were going to propose is that the ten-dollar fee would start on April fifteenth, only to those commercial operations and services that are collecting tree debris and lawn debris. By April fifteenth start date, we want to have two things we need to do at our location to prepare for that. One, we want to make sure the word gets out. This is something that's been kind of overlooked by ourselves, as well as the city for quite some time, and kind of a loophole that's been discovered and taken advantage of. So we were asking that we could impose something starting on April fifteenth, and that is give us plenty of time to communicate with the citizens, set up an operation to a little more safer environment. One of the things it requires that all residents now, regardless of what you're bringing in, we drive through, go through the drive-through, check in the office. That way, we can assign them a location spot within the drop-off location. Because you have some citizens come in and pull their large trucks around, and block all of the containers, and there's nowhere else for anybody to sit down. And then if we have to be convenient for them, and be service for them, we're having to pile that off to the side and send somebody out later on to reload the container again. So we're just asking to try to smooth this out, maybe impose this, it does not affect their mulch, the free mulch removal, because obviously, one of the things we've got is we don't want to get a surplus of grinding product that the city has to deal with at the grinding site. So this way, we'll continue, it would not affect the charge there, still be free mulch to the residents and commercial businesses, so no effect there. The last page of the little drop-off is just the little bubble points of the things that we feel like we need to do to make sure that our community can change their Facebook, changing our websites, putting up additional signage, getting the office prepared to check in every customer at the gate, so make sure we're taking charges and getting to the right accounts. So, I don't know, Wade, if there was anything we were really looking for from the council vote? You want to guide me there, what your thoughts were?
I may yield a little bit at the moment as the mayor's city attorney discusses.
Yeah.
I'd like to add something. Just in January, in February, you're talking almost ninety tons of grit in the winter months, that's not residence exposure. Ninety tons of grit in two months, in the winter months. It's just going to keep getting worse. And it's, the citizens don't have, like you said, the commercial, they're blocking everything. And they'll bring workers to wait and pick up trucks, and then they'll bring in more trailers. While the workers are waiting there at the facility to offload. And meantime, the residents, we have to go out and ask them, "Hey, move, so we can get these residents in here." And then we're the bad guy, right? Because we're stopping them from dropping their limbs. And it's about the residents of Boone County, is what I'm referring to.
So, questions, or I think you had something you were looking at?
I think we get some people in the audience that want to speak. Wade did pass a copy of the contract to me. I don't know if you've seen it, but read it, pretty much, so to speak, commercial.
I'm one of the bad guys. However, I don't...
I promise you, I'll hold up my truck when it gets unloaded, and I clean up the crap I drive.
And what everybody else drops, and I get out. Here's my problem. Mr. Boswell, Mr. Williams, Mr. Cone, Ms. Craig, are you able to load up a truck and haul a bunch of brush off out there and unload it?
Not today, or tomorrow doesn't look too good either.
Okay. I know for a fact, because, guys, I live right up above you. I've got the worst stop on the route, I'll guarantee it. But I know for a fact, last fall, I hauled off three loads from Mr. Williams. Now, I'm just speaking for me. I've done more than loads from a county resident. Everything else comes from folks who are unable to do it theirself. And I don't feel it's fair, because I feel it's double-charging our residents. I don't feel it's fair to assess this fee to commercial people, because generally, we're doing it for businesses or people that cannot haul that brush off theirself. That's my, that's my stand. I don't think it's fair, because, you know, we're out here, you know, it's not fair for me to have to charge what I have to charge to cover my insurance, my gas, my truck, a guy that helps me, and then have to pay to dump the stuff for a city resident who's lived here for thirty-five years, and have to charge, or however long, even a year, and have to charge them extra to dump the stuff that accumulates from their stuff. I understand your point, I really do. But there's got to be a different solution to the problem. And I can't tell you how many times I've pulled in there, and the dumpster's been full, and I went home, unloaded it, reloaded it, and taken it back down there later. Another problem that we're going to have, and our fire chief will attest to this, because I spent thirty years in this situation. Anytime you cut something off somebody's place, it does start off as commercial refuse. I could walk over there to Mr. Williams' house, cut a tree limb, start a fire in his backyard, and I'm fine. If I carried across the street to my place and started a fire, it's commercial refuse, and it's controlled by ADEQ. So, we're going to have people taking stuff out and burning it. And we're going to start having a different problem there. I think this is going to snowball and cause more problems than... It's just going to cause more problems and do more harm than good. I hope you can understand my point.
I understand your point.
Can I say something?
Yes.
In our contract, and I'll present it to you, I have it with me, we offer a service for the citizens and residents of Harrison for brush pickup, okay? It's in our contract, and I can put it together. So they can have it in so big a size, so big a round, piled up. We will come by with our truck and load it. So that is offered in our contract.
But there are people who are unable to physically do this stringing.
So we'll be able to cut it, stack it out there, but it says it's, it rules out commercial. Okay, but you look at, we've got four people on this council who cannot do that. They're physically unable to do that. So, therefore, what am I supposed to do at that point? These people are city residents.
Are you charging these residents?
I have to cover that, to cover my... It should be a minimal fee to cover my stuff, because you're being paid... You're already being paid. You're already being paid by what's on the water.
I'm trying not to have you pick it up and bring it to us and then haul it again.
Well, I think we got something, and I think this is going to cause more trouble down the road. I think it's going, I think it's going to cause, I just, I think, I've been here and done this because I did this when Methan's did this, and it was a pain. I saw people hauling it off and burning it in the city and outside of the city.
I guess my point would be to react is, that's not legal either. So now you're taking a responsible way of handling it, and you're providing a business and a service to them, and you have costs associated with, just like we do. We have to invade, let them dispose of it. So as a company, we expect to have this level of cost.
They're already paying, every month on the way.
At their curbside in our truck.
But you're not going to let me cut it and leave it at their curbside if they're unable to do it.
And you're creating more operational headache in our operation around here. We could pick up, we have the trucks out the street picking it up and being able to... So I hear your point, too.
But he just said, they can't hire me to cut it and leave it on the curbside if there's caution.
That's what the council decided. I mean, like I said, you're a commercial establishment, and certain costs associated with it.
Well, they are, they are already paid. They have it disposed there in the contract with the... Having their trash holed off, it's part of the deal.
Yeah, I just would do that.
Because, I'll be honest with you...
Gentlemen, 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 let's...
Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this matter?
All right, I will say that I, my thinking was headed towards what you were saying, sir, where I think it would be kind of double-dipping, since the residents are already paying for yard waste removal, and the ability that they can't...
It's a matter of following the contract. Have a second, hold on. Residents are paying for a composting operation that the city runs that's required by the ADEQ. We, many, many years ago, the city used to either bury or burn all the debris that was collected. ADQ took issue with that, so that's when they developed the composting operation. That's what the RCFE goes to fund. It also helps fund the lead pickup every year, because that's a major part of the composting operation. What the contract does say, and I'm hoping our city attorney agrees with me, I'm trying to follow his legal opinion, is that the definition of the yard waste that is included in Orion's contract is, does exclude commercially-generated yard waste. You know, so far, they've not enforced that, they've openly taken it, they've developed an issue with it, so they're looking to try and correct the situation. I don't think they have any, do they have any contractual obligation to take commercial yard waste? They don't, I don't read the contract that way at all, so... And that's going to be fairly typical in most cities.
Okay, so help me understand, what's the difference between, say, if Mr. Williams were to pick it up and this gentleman here who's providing a service? I mean, what if this gentleman took Mr. Williams' yard waste and put it at the curb? Would that be for them to pick up?
As long as it doesn't leave the property, I don't think it becomes commercial refuse at that point.
Because he's just providing a service to the...
I mean, I...
So what we're looking at is asking the commercial people, when they clean someone's yard, to leave it at the curb? Is that what we're saying?
Free service. I want to clarify, I mean, that's an additional subscription, basically, that citizens can sign up for if they wanted to have that service at their address.
Is there a timeframe?
I thought that was part of the deal already.
Okay, now, I'm really confused here. So we're saying that what the gentleman said from Orion, that if you stack your stuff up, and we're talking about wood primarily, or whatever the case may be, brush.
Limbs, leaves.
You stack it on your front curb, bundled wherever they want it, that's not in the twenty-eight dollars a month that I pay now? I don't know, my comment is, that's, I'm talking about... Is it, it's a separate fee? That's okay, but now we got two different issues.
I thought it was same, I thought it was included.
I thought it was included.
Yard waste was included.
The annual pickup is included.
And the large product every third month, every third week of the month, it's free.
They need to be called in on the bulk of that.
Yeah, the bulky waste pickup. When, three, four councils ago, they were, they considered including that in the base fee, but, you know, they were afraid that would raise the overall standard cost up too much, and so it became an optional service that people can sign up for.
But the once-a-month, the once-a-month pickup is included or didn't say?
For the bulky item.
Does that include yard waste?
On the second page of this, explain what this one square thirty-yard waste article is he's got here, because it says they will pick it up if this is part of our contract. is he's got here, because it says they will pick it up if this is part of our contract.
For curbside collection, limbs shall be bundled and cuttings or trimmings shall be bagged in paper bags.
This is, this is from the definitions part of the contract. It's defining what yard waste is and what qualifies as, as, I guess, as yard waste.
It's not the whole site.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the entire, you know, there's a whole other section of contract that establishes fees and what's included and whatnot.
It's just the definition.
So are they allowed the yard waste once a year with the spring pickup?
When it's spring cleanup?
Yeah.
I'll have to read into the contract and get back.
What about the every three weeks with the bulk pickup?
That's a, that's a bulky item. That's like, you want to get rid of a couch, or a love seat, or a table.
Bulk.
That's not yard waste, that's not tree limbs, that's not.
No, because those have to be disposed of differently. You can't, you can't, you can't land all the yard waste.
Okay. You know, I think this is pretty clear, there's no way. They ask for some things in addition to the contract, and I remember told you, it's not the contract, we're not going to honor it, and I would, I'd recommend we don't. Remember a couple of months ago?
We can't, we can't without changing the whole contract.
Now we have a contract that I think favors what you're wanting to do. So I don't, I, I think it's, we have the same position, abide by the contract. Good or bad for us, abide by the contract. Jim, you and I talked today about maybe the commercial people having access to the farm. Is that, you know, I don't think we're talking, you know, you could identify ten of them, couldn't you?
Well, I mean, if we're talking a hundred yards a day, on a daily operation, I can't man that facility all day, every day. I can't leave it open, because then we end up with bulky items, like the couches and the love seats.
But if you only had ten people like Jim, you know, Jim's not going to bring a bulky item. And, and these ten probably wouldn't.
I, I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm through, other than just a couple armfuls of trimming shrubs, because, like they mentioned, you know, yeah, this is hit, this hits in January and February, and generally, I'll get a cleanup like I did Mr. Williams, I'll get a couple of those along, but I don't take a lot of those, and I've already went through all of my accounts, done all the trimming, the major trimming and all that, and I'm done, because that's winter work, that's busy work.
So what would, way back to the question on the commercial people, you know, Robert Kramer, and, you know, we talked about five to ten today. Would we be opposed to giving those access? Five to ten commercial providers?
No, I mean, we can establish some limited hours to where I can have somebody down there.
Do you have to have somebody down there?
Otherwise, we end up with.
Even through these people, you think you'll have couches?
If, if the gate is open.
Oh, that's what you would have.
As you say, it's not going to be the smallest ones coming through.
How would they get in if the gate was locked? Do they have access?
We could discuss codes specific to.
Those people?
Certain commercial businesses, where if there is an issue, we can see who went in that particular.
What do you think? Is that something we should look into, or we should just?
I can look into it, I can talk to our, you know, the gentleman that manages our.
And you let him know, if we start seeing a couch or two, it's, they're gone.
I'll need to talk to PD and our wastewater as well, because that gate also restricts access to the firing range and the equipment they've got down there, as well as our wastewater plant.
Well, we probably can't do that.
No, you put your wastewater, your wastewater plant comes top priority, you got to protect it.
We have a separate game for it to keep the police out, but.
If you get them.
So that's, that's not as big a.
Well, if there was a line that it would be open to them, it might be, they might want to use Orion on the off times, and when this is open, use us.
Yeah, because we don't have a problem with seeking material.
Right.
We just take all we can get and we'll generate.
It comes there from them anyway, it comes to you.
It does, it makes it there regardless.
I think that, that kind of makes sense, doesn't it? Anybody agree with me?
I mean, I don't see, like, the rest of Orion's, won't you have it for its man, or have somebody there?
No, we, we just decided we had to have somebody there. We're not going to let people access to.
That way, we would leave the gate open two, three hours a day, that's, it'd be when the wastewater plant staff is there, and also I've got someone, yeah, it's going to be up at the front.
It's a couple hours a day, they can work their big trips into that timeframe, if not.
Then they can pay the ten dollars.
But, but it surely appears that the contract is the contract.
So we're, we're, we have to honor the contract, so.
That's just my opinion.
Okay, well, then it, if we have to honor the contract, then it's, that's that.
Yeah, we're out of this. Okay. Was that Fran?
I guess you can admit the contract if the council decides it wants to do that. And I'm not sure that, I think it would depend a little on Orion, if they still even want this, if the city steps up to, you know, to do that. It sounded to me like they may not even, they're doing it at cost anyway at ten dollars, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, and that's, we did figure, I mean, basically, the ten dollars should cover the cost, we're still probably a little bit on the downside, but it's mainly just covering the cost of handling that extra yardage that wasn't really in the contract, and we started looking at it, the time involved, and the equipment involved, and ten dollars a yard is not really, most, I'd say most of them bring in two, three yards. There are a few occasions you have the trucks, so we, you have pictures on, in your picture of ten or twenty yards. But, you know, those are probably multiple locations they're servicing, and multiple revenue streams that they're catching, so I get, I get the double dipping concern, but the contract basically states that there is a call ahead service that you can pay, and really sit in the system. If they don't have a lot, it would probably behoove the resident that you're, that's clipping to leave it in the yard. In this case, if you've got a commercial business going out and collecting a profit for that, and, and then turn around and using the city contract to do it for free, when it's really not included, then that's, that's the rub.
You're, you're.
And that's the rub. You're still going to come get all the mulch you want.
Yeah, I'd like to limit the compost, though, because we have had issues where commercial haulers, or commercial businesses have taken pretty much.
All of it.
All of the compost.
Yeah.
And that's, that's unlimited product, we can only make so much a year.
So what does that mean? What would you like to do?
That means if, well, I would like to put up, I would like to put in some kind of control that prevents commercial services from taking.
The compost from there?
From there, and then basically turn it around and sell in the product and service.
So we'll have to ask you all to.
Yeah, we just want to have to stay on the way and work through that and figure out.
We discussed it a little bit.
Okay.
Because, I mean, you could have somebody come in and drop off, you know, ten yards of limbs, but take thirty yards of mulch, and then the next resident comes in looking for them, has none available to the city actually to deliver.
Yeah, and nothing wrong with what they were doing, because you were allowing it to be private.
Right. Like I said, it was an oversight on our part, and, and, you know, that's why we want to make sure we kind of ease into this, give a thirty day notice, give it easy into it. I really think it may be a little of an issue upfront, as the gentleman mentioned, but I think it'll all pan over and on in a short term period.
Well, I guess this was for information purposes, the reason you were coming.
If that commercial hauler, as will determine, didn't show that that brush came from the city, would there still be a charge?
I think so, the way it's written, because really, how do we, how do we, as Orion, confirm that that actually came from somebody's house, unless we have to validate through a phone call or, and all that, now you're asking us to pull these, every load, and if it's multiple houses, then I got to call multiple residents to figure out how many that came from, so I can see that being a logistic issue, trying to, to chase that. What we're going to be asking for, though, is when they come in, if they actually sign in, put their address, their license plate, anything, because, because we do have a little dumping, sometimes they'll take, go in, call them back, and go to the camera, do a review, call them up, say, I need you to come back and pick up the couch separately, and do it the right way, or pull out your hazardous waste and take it back with you, because we cannot handle that. So we're going to have everybody pull through, so we've got a, a little cleaner environment and a little safer issue going on down there, and.
So you said that it runs about a hundred cubic yards a day?
Nice days, yes.
A day. So that means at ten dollars, you're picking up a grand a day.
Yeah.
And that'll be three hundred grand roughly a year.
It's not every day.
What a huge improvement to your bottom line. I mean, we ought to get a residential cut.
We would before, and they'd report, report to you.
Well, what about that? I mean, maybe we can give the residents, if you're going to enforce this, give us a little back, something to residents, maybe fifty cents or something.
I think we're tracking, continue tracking it, like I said, we just started this in the first year.
See what you make, and maybe we can get a little back.
Absolutely. We're going to have to send that down.
Okay, thank you.
We might get some back from the RC, okay. Be fees and city taxes involved. It's not ten dollars, and that's it, it's plus appropriate fees that go to the city.
Well, we, we want you to receive most of this, but if we could get a little, that'd be great. That'd be a really.
We'll track it and sit down and come up with a way, and sign a timeline, and take a look at it, and see if it actually impacts the.
Let's do that, maybe in three months.
His head hurts.
Thank you.
Are you wanting to speak?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, that was good.
All right.
All right, now, next we've got the request to remove some barricades.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay. I've been approached by the District Board of Realtors, their office is up behind, was it Dollar Tree up in that area? And I don't know how many of you know the history of this, but there are two streets back there, when that commercial development that was done, barricades were put up. Yeah, so that is at, that's Crestview there, directly behind the shopping center that's got, it's a Hibbett and Verizon. And so basically, it blocks access from the residential area to the commercial area and vice versa. The other one is at a different location that goes back to the same.
Same area.
Same areas. And so, we've, we've gone through this once before, I know the fire department was hoping to take those down several years ago.
No, he stopped it. Police department wanted it down.
Was it police?
Mm-hmm. He was gone.
Well, when they come in, we didn't, I didn't like it, wanted to move those.
That's when they filled this room up, the residents of that neighborhood, and did not want those barricades down.
I said that won't happen again.
Well, it could.
I don't think it'll be a could. You, you've also got a group that wants it down.
Yeah, and, and you've got an area business that want it down. Jeff, do you want to go ahead and discuss some of the?
I don't, yeah, I don't mind that. What brought, got all this started is, it's really created a, kind of a hangout back here for some not very good stuff going on. Everything from homeless people camped out, what appears to the naked eye being drug deals going down, people camping in behind these buildings. We're having these buildings here, Dr. Ark's new building, Tim's Hair Gallery, the Board of Realtors, we're having problems with, we've had some break-ins, we've had some vandalism, we've had, there's this dead end area back there, that those barricades have created just no traffic, so it's just kind of a, a dark hangout back there. And you can see, well, you can see where people drive around the barricades anyway. Here, you can see the dirt where people are driving around. This dude down here's got, has got it, he's sitting in his yard, the, you know.
They drive through them, too.
Yeah, I mean.
We've had to repair them. Why would we put them there?
Probably for the neighborhood that was there before Walmart.
The residents didn't, at, at the time, the residents didn't want, didn't want all the traffic, but, you know, over time, you've had this neighborhood, you've had a lot of development, now you've got this neighborhood that has to drive all the way around to get to any of the development, you've got a stoplight right there that would give all these residents a safe way to get out onto the highway, rather than coming out here to Ozark and having to fight.
Well, they could get to Hester as well, there's a light.
And they can, they can, they can come back down to Hester and go down and around over to Ozark next. But, I mean, you do have a, a pretty easy pathway there, if you, if you open that up. But our, our biggest deal, the Board of Realtors and these businesses that are back here are, it's just because it's, it is creating some, some kind of unsightly things, because there's no, we feel like, because the bottleneck, we feel like the bottleneck has created some issues. It's creating an area of out of sight, out of mind, is what you're trying to say. Yeah.
And we do want a straight light back there, too.
A straight light?
Yeah, to light up the areas so it's not.
That would be nice, but, you know, that's a different issue.
Just a suggestion.
Sean, are you guys minded many calls over there?
We are, we've gone up there, we've gone up and put it under extra patrol and stuff, because you do have our, our panhandle where there's a Walmart, like that, when they move from one area, they go across the street, and they go back there, because it's a dead end, it's dark. And then hide out back there, we have.
It's still going to be dark if you take the barricades down, they're still going to get behind the buildings if you take the barricade down.
There's going to be traffic.
Yeah, exactly, in the residential neighborhood.
Well, so, there's going to be anyway.
There's not. If that was my neighborhood, I would be livid, but that would just be my opinion, and I know what those people were the last time they came. And we did take the fire trucks and everything and made sure, this was with the existing buildings at that time in two thousand fourteen or, and they could clear all the buildings, that was the concern then, and the, and the residents of that neighborhood were in arms, because when they did the traffic, or how much traffic was coming out of Walmart, I mean, I would be as guilty, too, it would be easier to cut through the neighborhood than hit sixty-five, and it ruins their neighborhood, you have ten thousand cars coming through their neighborhood. That's, I would like to hear what they have to say.
When we done this originally, I was opposed to it, blocking them off, because it created a dead end street that we don't allow anywhere else. The council, I don't remember what year that was, the council at that time did not see my direction, they put them up, so what has happened since then, I don't know. You said you all had that address.
Yeah, we had it, a room full, and we went through and we checked it, and so we, we didn't do anything, and it was really the police department. Chief Paul was concerned that his officers couldn't get to residents at a certain point, if they were, coincidentally, if they were at a certain point and they got a call, but we looked at it and looked at the map, and if they knew their streets, it was very easy to get around the barricades and/or, you know, it was just knowing their neighborhoods and knowing their streets, as you know, your personnel have to know, you know, if they're at a restaurant over there by Walmart, they would know how to get back in that neighborhood without hitting a barricade.
Way slow to respond.
Mm-hmm, and, and, you know, I mean, it was, it was, it was a neighborhood that was going to lose their security of being a neighborhood, and it was going to be a thoroughfare like we've seen, we can't control the traffic now on, you know, Hester Drive and the different places.
Unfortunately, we need more routes of getting people off of sixty-five, that's literally what.
So we're going to sacrifice a neighborhood? It's not my neighborhood, but I would not be happy.
I understand that, but.
That neighborhood was there before all that development.
It was, and barricades never should have gone up. I mean, that's, that's the thing.
The through sheet should have never been made through, I mean, that's my opinion, I'm not going to argue, I'm just saying.
Those streets existed, they weren't made through.
Well, they made, commercialized them and put the light out to sixty-five. That, they did do that.
And I think some, and I think Wayne may have remembered it, maybe Joel, but, you know, we had the same issue with Cardinal, when Cardinal went through, and I don't know what that's done to that, over there, you know, from Gibson, right there from Gibson goes into the, Home Depot does the same, St. Prentice boy, you know, I don't think it ever.
Doesn't really go anywhere, you know, I mean, you're right.
Yeah, I mean.
Mr. Hett, not being a member of that committee, can I?
Sure.
If I could comment?
If I could comment. I have to, I have to ask, if, if the road was originally put there, there was a reason for a road to be built there. There was the intention that it would be used, and somebody put up, quote unquote, "a temporary barricade" that has now been permanent for however many years.
I can explain to you part of that, Mitch, if you let me say it. And this is before your time. And the reason the barricades up were the same citizens that you're talking about came to us. And we're complaining if y'all that's been here, that used to be a big open field back there. The one street did not exist at that time. They came out up at what is Crestview, and they parted, they drank, and they had all kinds of liquor parties out there. And the residents got upset with the noise and everything going on up there. So, they came to the city and said, can we get these barricades out so these people can't go out there and party? Since that time, the building, the businesses have gone in there. They opened the one up in behind the business, and because it was not a street for years, it may have been plotted for a street, but it dead ended up there where the barricade is on that end. That was the end of it at that time. But the reason the barricades are there because citizens still fit on kind of partying and everything that's going on up there. So, we made a decision, put the barricades up to keep them out of that field. Now, everything has changed up there for the business and everything. As me, I don't think the barricades needs to be there. But, like Linda says, we're going to protect the citizens and the amount of traffic that goes through that area.
I guess I'm of the opinion, and I understand Mitch, what you're saying, but I'm the opinion is, is we have those people up there that live there and opportunity to speak.
I agree with that 100%. But I guess my point is, you've got a barricade on a street.
It is on.
It's been there for a long.
For a long time. So, where you and I live, let's say that we were going to barricade Oak at that point, it would change that traffic flow, obviously. And living at 2003 Thury Lane, I can promise you, there was more traffic there than any other secondary street in Harrison. It was the north-south thoroughfare while I was there.
And it used to end at your house.
It used to end at my house. That's right.
Unlike a barricade.
Right. And, you know, I guess my point is, you've got a barricade on a piece, on a street that was, that's a street. It's not like it was a dirt road and, and for that section. We either need to block it off or remove the barricade. But if people are driving around it, the barricades are not serving any purpose.
I don't think everybody drives around, you know, the citizen leaving Walmart isn't going to drive around barricade, did not drive 65. You might have some. You're right.
But I agree that we need to have anybody that's in that neighborhood comment on it, but for me, it's a street.
Mayor Jackson actually informed Glenn after the last council meeting that it was going to be on the agenda this month.
And then the other, other part comment I would make, I assume you're asking for permission, but it, you're the, you know, Public Works and he's the mayor. If you say move it, I guess we could vote.
They were, they were put up by order of the council. So, I'm not taking it down. Thank you, Wade. Well, I mean, it wasn't this council, but it was by order of the council.
Well, Mr. Head, then I will.
So, are we looking for?
I'll end my questions.
I'll say this, back when it was done the first time and everything prior to that, when we had a situation like this came up in the city, having been here 37 years, I know a little bit of this. You, the police chief, fire chief, and the mayor went out and studied the location, looked at it. You made the decision to present it to us and what your recommendations would do. Then we'd schedule a public hearing for the citizens out there in this case, and we would make a decision after that.
Also clarify a few procedural stuff on this. Because the city was going to prevent access from the residential areas to that commercial area, the developer at the time did not dedicate the entire roadway. So, we will have to clear up some right-of-way issues to take full ownership down there on Walmart Drive. That is, that is a dedicated fire lane.
I talked to him again today. He said he can have it.
Oh, I, he, you know, he'd get it in a heartbeat. I would too.
But still, pay-per-worth issue.
Yeah, it's just something that would have to be addressed.
So, the Walmart Drive wasn't there when they put the barricade, or when they developed it. Right, that's how come the street is in. Then they put that and put the light.
Were those streets built to city standards?
At the time, yeah. I guess unfortunately, we won. Part of those streets that are left up there were from an old subdivision that, that's no longer there. That's some of what we're talking about. Unfortunately, with the lack of traffic, it's interesting, lots of traffic deteriorates asphalt pavement, but also lack of traffic at all is, is not good for it either. So, I mean, we're going to have to improve, I shouldn't say improve, but we're going to have to do some structural improvements to that asphalt out there if we're going to be putting more traffic on it. So, that's another, another consideration.
One way or the other, you have to reasphalt it. Too much traffic or not enough, right?
Well, if barricades aren't coming down, probably they're going to start ripping asphalt out at some point when I have time to get guys out there to.
I think we need to look at it and come back with a recommendation from you.
I think we need public comment, too.
Yeah, and then it's their community. If they don't want to come out and speak, that's one thing, but, you know, maybe they do, and I don't know. And you said you told a gentleman out there, or is that what you said?
Mr. Baughman was here at the last council meeting. We discussed it with the master lawyers.
You've got letters from the businesses.
Okay.
Asking.
Well, I saw the letters from the businesses, but the businesses came after the neighborhood. I'd really like to hear from the, I'd like, if they have anything to say.
I'm surprised Glenn's not here. He knew it was going to be discussed.
Yeah.
So.
Corona.
And they were some of the very boys who were.
They were in the past. Remember, they'd fill up this place.
Someone's like, what?
I'd be surprised if they did.
That's your ward, by the way.
I know it is. Thank you, Mr. Jack, Mayor Jackson.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Okay. I think, I think.
Yeah.
Wade, I guess, you still up there?
One more in the next committee.
You've got two more.
I do have two. I actively marked one out.
We ready to move on?
Yes.
I'm going to make this first one simple for you. Is there anyone here to say anything in regards to condemnation? Didn't think so. I've entertained a motion to approve.
So, move.
Move it forward.
That's simple. All right. Salvage yard screening ordinance.
Okay.
Are you done?
We got to get to that one. Okay, Mayor Jackson and I, I guess, all in all, have discussed complaints from some businesses regarding their neighboring businesses that run in salvage yards that are just wide open public view. It's everything from sound, noise, dust. You know, we're talking about businesses that are bringing in potential clients. That's what they're bringing them past. So, we did a little bit of research. We found an ordinance that was developed down in Salin County originally and modified this to address some requirements that salvage yards, anything that operates as a salvage type yard should be screened from public view if that operation is within 100 foot of a city street. We've got those requirements in our zoning code, so new stuff, since we've adopted that not that long ago, I can control. There was an attempt to try and not grandfather the existing salvage yards in, in the zoning code. That was not, it didn't work because, you know, we also have clauses in there about existing operations and continuing to exist in non-compliance. So, you know, my opinion was, we should probably, if we want to go this route, do an independent ordinance that addresses this very specifically. And so, I want to be clear, this would not grandfather any existing operation in town. But it does set out a timeline in order to come in compliance with the screening appointments. These businesses would have to start putting up the screens within one year. They have a year to get the process started, get things going, and they would have a total of two years to be within compliance of the ordinance. And just to, I was trying to remember what the height was on that.
Eight feet.
Eight, thank you. Yeah, it would require eight foot, eight-foot screening fence. There's different materials they could do. We don't really specifically tell them how to do it. I, you know, even a, you know, a berm with, you know, dense landscaping, as long as it provided the screening mechanism, that would be acceptable.
How many, you say businesses. How many are we talking about?
I'm talking about one main one.
We're talking about one main one, but.
Okay. And Phil, I don't like playing games. I want to know who it is.
We're not playing games. The salvage yard and industrial park road. That's the one that I'm concerned about.
Got it.
That one was, I've been there three times, asking for a discussion. I've called them in Little Rock several times. I mean, it is just an absolute mess. I saw.
Got it.
You've got West Rock across the street.
Now, do we intend to, if this ordinance is approved by council, contact these individual corporations?
We will.
Yes.
It says that we will contact, we will attempt to contact them, but it also clarifies that any, that's not an excuse because it's very easy for people to say they didn't get contacted.
I entertain a motion to move this ordinance forward.
Before we do that, I'd like to ask Wade, how about the one down by the city shop?
Ours?
No, SKD.
I think that one could very well.
Yeah, there'll be others that would apply.
But the state law also has to be applied to theirs because it's visible from US 65, and their requirements are very strict, and their time, I don't think is same as yours. And I hate coming around and bypassing, and I mentioned this to you before, I hate coming around and bypassing and hit the bridge here and see all that salvage out there on the right when we're not supposed to have to look at it. I think we need to kind of blend in with what state's requirements are if we do something within the city, too.
Okay. I did put a provision in there that we, anything in here that would be in conflict where the state law applies, the state law controls at that point.
Again, I go back to, I would entertain a motion with the full council. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Move it on.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Yeah. Hey, if we ever get to the point where Harrison's too clean, just let me know. We'll stop. Just let me know.
I'm glad to hear.
We're getting close.
I have no idea who you're talking about.
I've never had a problem.
Matt?
Hey.
Hey, man. You calling me up now? Coolest guy in town.
Wake up, man.
Matt Bell, Harrison Convention and Visitor's Bureau.
Matt, you haven't been introduced yet.
You got to talk slow for him.
I mean, this has been a wonderful show.
I understand you've got your attorney representing you.
He's on the clock.
But the sad story is, is I guess my point, and before you ever get started, I want to ask a simple question.
Yes, sir.
Is there not a provision in your ordinance establishing the convention of visitors to be able to collect the income tax? I didn't have a chance to call and ask them. It's asked before we start.
We are collecting into people to see your parents and see if you.
Is there a provision for you to go ahead and go ask these people?
Yes, we believe so.
Introduce your, introduce your attorney.
I'm Joe Hunk. I'm the hired muscle for Matt here.
Joe, don't get any ideas. I'm just the chair. Anyway, okay. Okay, carry on.
We've been trying to do a little bit of research into this. We actually were just handed a, at least one copy of an ordinance that was not posted on the, on the City of Harrison website. So, I don't know who we need to talk about updating the scan-ins of the ordinances. But if this one is still enacted, if this one still controls, then this might actually give us a bit for what we're asking for tonight, which is a little bit more muscle in collecting the already established tax here. So, not really raising tax. Businesses aren't paying the tax, and so therefore, I have to be hired. So ironically, this attorney is, is kind of doing a cost-saving measure for the CATPC.
Yes, so we actually have about five that haven't been, haven't paid in over a year. So, they're cheating yours, and they're collecting it from our people. So, they're cheating us. And we have one business that is new to town, six months new, that basically refused your call to. I have to agree, yeah. Yeah. I'm shocked. So, it's a problem.
They're not keeping your money. They're keeping the.
That's exactly.
Harrison's money.
All our office does, I mean, we try our best. We send out letters, and then we bring them in if we have to. But our main objective is not to be a tax collector. It's to promote tourism in the City of Harrison. That's what we're good at, not being the tax man.
So, does the responsibility in regards to non-payment fall upon the CATPC or does it fall on the city council?
Yes.
Wrong answer. I'll ask that question again as your attorney.
Well, as far as the collection goes, it is our duty right now to, or CATPC's duty right now to collect that tax. What we're looking for is, I guess, a little bit of help of the city council to.
What do you need from us?
Well, right now, it's not very clear. I need help from Mr. Ragland, and then, and if in fact.
Don't call him, Mr. R. I'll go to his head.
If in fact, this ordinance is still active, we might even need his help in his capacity as a city prosecutor. So, this will kind of take a little bit of trouble off of my desk and put it on to grants in one way or another.
Do you need any action from our committee to proceed with this?
I don't think so. I mean, we, we're looking.
I appreciate the information, but.
Well, part of this may also include a possible amendment to the ordinance that controls here. But I believe that I'll have to talk with Grant about that. But again, you know, we scheduled this with the idea that I wouldn't be having this ordinance in my hand.
Yeah, that, that ordinance is not actually on file at my desk, which is baffling.
I guess, I guess my, my point is, what I'm getting at here is, is that you are a entity that operates based on CATPC tax money, and you're not getting paid tax money that's duly supposed to come to you. And for the lack of a better term, I'm going to ask the question. Why have you waited a year before we start some sort of legal action against that?
Well, some of, some of this is actually getting paid by the collection letters and by the process that's already enacted and the certificate that was set in this. We've got some copies of the process to hand out to y'all.
Bill, I sit in those meetings every month, and I think it's just come to the point where they've had enough.
I mean, I'm good with.
And, and so does Heath and Mary Jean.
Yeah, we're here.
They're both on that committee.
In our defense, the reason why we waited so long, too, is, it's not our intent to go after these businesses. We want to work.
You don't have a choice.
But when they stop, you know, call, or when they stop returning the calls, avoiding us, ducking, you know.
When they are not paying taxpayer money back to where it's supposed to go to in the first place, you have no choice.
Or collecting. I want to emphasize, there's a business that has not been collecting, which is written into law in the City of Harrison that they're obligated.
This is the new business?
Yes.
Do we know they're not collecting if we went there and bought something?
That is correct.
I have, but I haven't looked.
Then they are not. They were not as of, I don't know.
Just hard to understand.
Just after February 15th.
Why you do this? Change your register, don't you?
So, why, I mean, do we, would a public scolding in the newspaper, if we mention them here, help before we take any other action?
It could very well.
I can, I think, I'm sorry, but I'm willing to take it a step farther. How many you've got? Six?
That I would note, yes.
Ten?
There's a lot that are delinquent, but the problem child are those that are in excess of 90 and 120 days. That's when it becomes a real issue.
I mean. It's kind of like finding out what, what we were talking about in regards to where the problem was out on Industrial Park Road. Where's the problem with who's not paying their taxes? Because it's tax money. It's a matter of public record.
So, those, would you like them?
Absolutely.
Central Donuts and Shipley Donuts, both the same entity. Jasmine Thai Restaurant, Primos. Razorback Ribs is the one that has refused to collect and is not remitting. And Townhouse Cafe is also a big, has become a problem child. And then White Oaks Number 8, 26, and 87 that were purchased from Petromark, no longer owned by one of our previous CATPC members, Steve Turner, not associated with Petromark, anything whatsoever, so make that clear. But those three White Oak stations are also.
Is that include the White Oak over by us that's no longer active?
No, that is not included in there. No, we dropped them from the list. So, those are the ones that are significant. We do have a few more that are at that 90 plus mark, but I think they're, they're not as big of an issue. They at least communicate with.
What does CATPC say? What's the committee say?
They want me to go after them. And then the mayor was at the February board meeting, and he said, why don't you come tonight? So, we were going to, but then we thought we'd have our ducks in a row and have attorney, attorney conversation. Anyway, they want to do whatever we can.
You listed names, how much in tax money we're talking. It doesn't matter.
We're in the thousands.
Okay.
Without question. I don't have those.
Well, the frequent nature of this, the kind of, I mean, not to single out any business, but there are repeat offenders. So.
Yeah.
So, the problem, the problem is.
He ordered that quite nicely.
Somebody asked me today, and I said, yeah, maybe you could do a better job at that, but these guys are the same people time to time again. So, well, it's obvious.
I don't like going to the, I mean, it's, it's offensive to me to walk into a business and watch the owner duck out. They're too busy, you know? And they're, and once again, I don't like to do that to a business owner. And I get that it is my responsibility, but I, you know, I have been kicked out of a restaurant in town before.
What's the penalty?
Would that be a job?
For a restaurant that uses it visibly.
Penalty? $500.
That's it?
And we, yeah.
We don't shut their doors?
Every offense, $500.
Every day?
Every time. I guess it would be every month. You know, the ordinance, did you guys get a copy of that? It's about six sentences. That's pretty cool. And it's written into me as well. It says, if you don't comply, you got to pay 500 bucks. It's a misdemeanor.
One time?
Every offense?
You would write a ticket.
You'd write a ticket.
And each violation would be.
So, city police. So city police would enforce that?
It's unclear, but probably, yeah. Well, that's all we're asking for, city council help there, because I know a lot of matters get turned over to, well, that's a civil matter. Well, civil litigation costs a lot of money, and it takes a lot of time. And frankly, for the price or the amount that's collected here, it's really hard. I don't think CATPC can go over to legal aid.
Wow.
What kind of action you'd, what would you like from us?
I think at this point, it's just you to recognize that we do have an issue, and maybe allow your attorney opportunity to work with our attorney. I'll tell you that we tried this approach a few years ago under previous administration, and we were all but told, "It's your job, go do it." There was no effort, and it was always mind-boggling to me, and that's when, when the mayor and I discussed, "It's a city ordinance, but the city can't assist us in enforcing a city ordinance. What's the difference with any other city ordinance?" It's mind-boggling.
There are ordinances that we don't enforce.
It'd be nice to know what those are and get them off the books.
Get them off the books. Absolutely.
I'm not replying with...
Or enforce them, you know.
We don't need to know this one.
And I could mention one, but we don't need to rehash that for an hour and a half. But I think that this is fairly simple. If they're in violation of the ordinance with the agreement of the mayor that we just send a police officer and out there and say, "We're going to find you."
Is that what you need, a ticket?
Yeah, I think it would be a ticket of some kind. I mean, I can work with...
I realize we're sitting in committee, and we're not, we can't take any action.
I think it could be, I mean, if there's already an ordinance on the books, it's just a matter of interpreting and...
I started to say, there's, why do you, why, I don't know if you change any ordinance, you take what you've got in the...
Again, going back to my original point when we very first started this, why haven't you done this up until this time?
There's several factors. Previous administration pulled us all, but no, and that was a big, big problem.
Now you got a council.
And that's, that's pretty incredible. That's...
That's, that's part of my experience. I'm not willing to provide...
At this point, it's just a lot of them to do, what can be done. And just to be clear, if they are getting billed or fined, they always have an opportunity within our policy to come in and make out a payment arrangement. I have the ability, without even going to my commission, and do a 12-month payout. If they can pay this off within a 12-month period and maintain, so let's say, they started, you know, they're...
Plus they maintain current.
Plus they maintain the current, and all they're doing is adding 1/12 of their debt to that. Now, if that becomes too excessive for them, then we have to go to our commission, and they have to approve anything above that 12-month...
Any effort would be...
Let me clarify my position clearly. I don't know that we need to do anything because there's an ordinance on the book that we can have the mayor and the police department and the city attorney enforce?
Yeah, I'll read through it and make sure there's nothing missing from it. There were several, when Jeff and I looked through the old ordinances, there were, there were multiple ordinances that looked like this, and it's a little bit unclear why there are different ones, so we want to find the most current to see what, I'm not even sure. This one was passed in 1987, so I don't even know if it's the most current one, but Jeff and I are going to look together to see if there's something more current, see if it has what we need in there. But I'll work with their attorney to make sure that we move this on the...
And I would even question Mr. Cohen. Do you agree with me on that?
The only, the only thing, I agree with you to a point, but this ordinance is written like this, and when we went through this several years ago, the ordinance is written like this, there's no enforcement clause in here. There's no clause telling you who's going to enforce this.
Ah, Paul Harvey.
Yeah.
Now you know...
We need to redo the ordinance to have an enforcement clause.
You think that's an issue?
I'll definitely speak with Wade. I don't, I don't know the specifics about the conversation. I'm not sure or not, but I'm, I will certainly make sure that whatever, if the current one on the books is being enforced, I'll make sure that it's okay to enforce it. If I think there's deficits, we can bring it before council and do it quick.
Yeah, we may, we may want to do one anyway to raise that $500.
Yeah, you may want to add the $500.
The cost of living will get you at least a thousand. I don't know what the hourly rate is for this young man right here. I hope he's better than...
We don't get, we better got a raise. You should have let him on the stand.
We'll let the attorney work it out.
I think tomorrow you'll get some chance to know. I sure hope so. Might be, might be. He said, "We have been successful utilizing an attorney." You know, for a while there, we didn't even have that privilege. It was just us.
I'm more concerned about the businesses not even collecting.
And that's strange. It's really strange. I can't understand it. I feel like he's a good business person. He's got multiple stories. I talked to him personally. He said he would. I mean, there could be a reason. I really am shocked. The other ones, that is a year, a year.
I've talked to the council before. And they've still had it.
Agreed.
You're off the clock.
Thank you.
I either want to go along or I want to go with Cheerios.
Wait, I've had a complaint last week, and I went by and checked it over the weekend. This kind of goes in line with Mayor Jackson's, clean premises, clean Harrison. Two different complaints. And the first one surprised me when I got there. At Hester and 65, you may have seen this, you may not be aware of it, when runoff goes in, bar to span, there's a pit, there's a stream of water. Sunday afternoon, that water was stagnant and very unpleasant. Then their second complaint was the holding pools at both Home Depot and Walmart. I don't know whether you've looked at them, I don't know, went around and looked, the brush and stuff, they're all up, both of them have plastic bags and everything else blended, and they're very unsightly around these businesses like that. I don't know who's responsible for cleaning them.
They're privately owned.
But I think it's something we need to look at, for cleaning, cleaning.
Can we enforce that? Can we start with a letter?
I think so.
That's probably all it'll take to hold depot and Walmart.
Yeah, no, the one there, bar to span, it has to do with the water deal, it's probably going to be a highway department. But the water right now is standing there, even two or three foot deep, and it was falling green around the edge of Sunday afternoon.
This is a clean premise issue, or? Well, that one, that one, like you said, from the state, the businesses.
Who owns the one, the, the big holding area next to Home Depot? Who did that, Home Depot?
I don't know, Wade. That was, that was built as part of the Home Depot. It would take, you would take Home Depot, yeah.
It had been, it's been a nice war almost since the day they...
They need to keep that clean.
A couple of years ago, they took it down to the ground and over cleaned it up.
Well, somebody's been under here recently, again, but it just, they quit in the middle of it.
Home Depot is one of Walmart's.
Walmart's it.
You want to take care of it?
They're living on it.
I'll look at the one on 65 and Hester. You take care of that one. Mark, take care of that one, and motion to a chair.
Either that or I want Cheerios.
Okay, good deal.
What a night. Here's all your information. Unless the mayor wants it to leave in the office, I mean...